The first will be a motion about resolving a complaint that we heard in the session. That would be an item for action.
If there are no objections, I think we should add that as an item for action tonight. So without objections, we will add that to the agenda.
Thanks. And the second thing I'd like to add is that the State Department of Education is considering asking the federal government for a waiver from standardized testing this year and has created a way that the public can give input into that. And I wanted to ask to just broadcast if you could give like just a couple minutes information update to let people know about that process. That would be an item for information.
Without objection, we can add that as an item for information. Laurel?
Is Rob aware of this request? Okay.
I wanted to be scumpy and mean straight here.
If there's no objection, we'll add that as an item for information. Are there any other questions, changes, or corrections to the agenda? Okay, with that, we'll move on. Next up on the agenda is an introduction of guests and the superintendent's report. Dae, you have the floor.
Thank you. Porte, Rivaso, members of the board, listening audience, and those of you that have joined us here this evening, thanks for coming. The days leading into winter break keep getting shorter and shorter, and our agenda tonight is really full. So I'm going to keep my comments rather short, but I really do appreciate the many long hours that you have given to our students and our staff, members of the board. I know staff and students alike are looking forward to the break from school routine for the winter holidays. For those of you that have time off, I hope you enjoy your time away, whatever plans you may have, traveling, staying home, volunteering, working, relaxing. I hope they really include some time with family and friends and some time with yourself. It's really important. For those members who, staff members who'll be working over the break, I hope the different pace of the day is refreshing to you and gives you an opportunity to catch up on your projects and some time to recharge as well. That said, we know that our schools provide some really critical services to many of our students and our families. And the time away over an extended break can cause stress and can be can be a real challenge. So I would urge any of you to reach out to those that you know because all of us care and let us know what might be of assistance while we are in an extended break away from school. There's a lot of resources and a lot of people who stand ready to help any way that we can. My best wishes to absolutely everybody over the break this season, and we all look forward to the days getting longer after the 21st, bit by bit. I look forward to seeing all of our staff members and students return in the new year refreshed and recharged with the promise of new opportunities and more sunshine ahead in 2023. Take care.
Thank you, Superintendent Dae. The next item on the agenda is items raised by the audience. The school board receives written comments by email at board@4j.lane.edu and sets aside time in each regular board meeting to hear public comments. Community members can sign up to speak to the board by submitting their request online at 4j.lane.edu/board/publiccomment or contact the superintendent's office. The deadline is the Monday before each meeting. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes and cannot give their time to another speaker. A timer will count up indicating when three minutes have been reached. Our expectation for meeting decorum is that comments will be respectful and free of profanity and derogatory language. Speakers may offer objective comments or criticisms about district operations and programs. For complaints about individuals, the district has a board policy and complaint process. Please contact the superintendent's office at 541-790-7707 for more information about submitting a formal complaint. Tonight, we have six speakers. Eliza, can you introduce our first speaker?
Our first, our first speaker is Penny.
Penny, are you in the audience?
Yeah, I'm here. Thank you. Hi, my name is Penny Stutt. I'm the principal at Network Charter School. Tonight, the 4J Charter School Review Team will present the charter renewal and findings for Network Charter. And I wanted to take this opportunity to give additional information, not necessarily provided in these findings, that I feel is just as relevant and as important. Network is celebrating its 20th year as a charter this coming year. We are celebrating two decades of partnerships, community, and continued mission empowering students to find their strengths and interests by providing resources that emphasize environmentally and socially sustainable ways of being. We are a diverse community of educators with authentic experience and a network of small businesses, nonprofits, and families that carry out our mission. I just wanted to offer a brief overview of some of the awesome partnerships we have and what they provide our students. Nearby Nature is dedicated to fostering appreciation of nature nearby and providing tools for ecological living. Nearby Nature's offerings at Network Charter School integrate academics with hands-on activities, career-related skill development, community involvement, field experiences, and so much more. Heartwise is essential goal to create a setting in which the tools to build and sustain inner peace are made available and practiced. Heartwise program at Network Charter offers a transformative education for students in a safe, creative, and compassionate environment. The Materials Exchange Center for Community Arts is dedicated to diverting materials out of the waste stream and into the community's creative endeavors. Through MECA's partnership with Network Charter School, students are given the resources and creative independence to transform trash into art and into student confidence. And in addition to these partnerships, we also offer a certified culinary CTE program. Our CTE program prepares students for the first year of Lane Community College's Culinary Arts and Hospitality Management Program, as well as a job in the food and service industry. Students within these classes are responsible for preparing breakfast and lunch daily for all of NCS students and staff for free. Students also plan and prepare our school feast and events like Chef's Night Out and complete internships at local restaurants. This Friday will be your holiday feast, and I wanted to take this brief moment to extend a formal invite to all 4J board to join us at 11:45 at our main campus to enjoy this amazing meal that our students have made and be in community with us as the students have cleaned and decorated our space. So in short, I just wanted to let everybody know that Network is a community model with a holistic approach. We support student learning by relying on a network of resources, volunteers, educators, families, businesses, awesome young humans that we get the privilege to grow and learn with. And I want to take the opportunity to share that with you tonight, and I appreciate everybody's time. Thank you.
Thank you, Penny. Thank you, Penny. Our next speaker is Denise Velasco, and after that, we have Cohen Gilbert Morgan.
Good evening. My name is Denise, and I'm in my 18th year at Network Charter School. I teach health, PE, social studies, independent living, event planning, social justice classes, and more. In addition, I am the guidance counselor. As guidance counselor, I meet with every student three times a year to go over credits, graduation support, and schedule classes. I also support students transitioning from high school to what their plans are for after high school. Network has been my family for the last 18 years. We really focus on building community and relationship. I love that I'm still connected with many graduates and can call them my friends now. Network just doesn't help students with their academic journeys. We also strive to support students' unique personal journeys. Students and family have access to our onsite holistic mental health practitioner who offers support for those struggling with depression, anxiety, isolation, pandemic fatigue, home life dynamics, friendship dramas, school performance, and other issues. Students additionally have access to drop-in clinics that provide short-term counseling, resource referrals, and OHP signup. Network also assists students and families by provisioning resources to support basic needs. Our weekly food pantry program helps students and family experiencing food insecurities. Our Family Resource Center provides access to foundational services like computer internet access, printer resources, laundry, and a free boutique. The Holiday Boutique is a service that allows students to shop for gifts for family and friends at no cost. Last year, Heather Hickox and I co-created the Outdoor Credit Recovery Adventure Program, Oh Crap for Short. Oh Crap is a kinesthetic and immersive learning experience for students who are deficient in credits. Almost every month, we provide students an opportunity to earn credit in core subjects. Since we started this program, we've had 47 different students fill 121 slots over eight trips, and we've awarded 22.8 total credits. In the last year, we have summited mountains, snowshoe, hide-to-waterfalls, played in the ocean, met Smokey Bear, questioned narratives, challenged their minds in bravery and high-rope courses, and crawled through caves. These outdoor activities have increased student engagement, aided in development of social and collaborative skills, provided countless opportunities for discovery, creativity, problem solving, and STEM education. Students have earned credit for graduation and some have completely eradicated lost credit from COVID school closures. In addition, their outdoor learning has huge benefits on students' mental health, fostering new friendships and academic performance in the classroom. These amazing opportunities have been paid through, paid for through a grant. Unfortunately, we recently found out the grant has been cut, and we are losing a significant amount of money. Some of the trips will need to be cut if we don't raise the remainder of the money. We've created a GoFundMe in hopes through enough community members to see the value of this groundbreaking program and help it continue. Thank you for your time this evening.
Next, we have Cohen Gilbert Morgan, and after Cohen, we will have Tova Gilbert Morgan. Cohen, are you with us?
Yeah, hi. Just setting it up real quick. So I I came into being a student at Network just before COVID hit. And so I've been here for the entirety that it's been open after COVID. And so it's it's been great to see just how basically when the community didn't exist very much at, because it had just restarted from being COVID, to just grow into what it is now. And due to the fact that it's such a small school, everyone knows each other, and so it really fosters like a community environment. And the Outdoor Credit Recovery Activities Program is really helpful for getting credit that is otherwise difficult to get due to how involved it is for such a burst amount of time. So you can get a lot of credit with a short trip due to just how much is packed in one space, which is really helpful if you're behind on credits like I am. And so I have gone on most of the Oh Crap trips, so it's been really helpful, and Network is amazing. What else? We have feasts before every break that is hosted by and cooked entirely by our culinary staff, which is just the students. And we have won multiple awards from Chef's Night Out, which is very cool. What else to talk about? Yeah, it's a good place. That's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Next up, we have Tova Gilbert Morgan and then Harry Singer. We have Tova coming in now.
Can you hear me? Can I hear you? Good, good. Thank you so much for this opportunity. I'm such a proud mama right in this moment, I have to tell you, on so many different levels. But we came across Network on a flyer that literally that day changed our life and the trajectory of the success of my son in school. I am a public school teacher. I'm a licensed public school teacher. I've taught for Lane Community College for the last 17 years. I'm also a licensed clinical social worker. And to see the environment and to be a part of that community of Network Charter School has been absolutely transformative for my kiddo and his relationship to academics and to his relationship socially. It's, I really cannot tell you the gratitude that we hold for this school. And to let you know, we live outside of Flometh, so our kid travels 45 minutes one way to come to be a part of school. And he went from not wanting to be, to go to school and resisting going to school to getting himself up and being a part of the community and being integrated. The, so many of the programs have been absolutely revolutionary for him in his engagement with the community and the engagement with the teachers. The trust and what is built through those small class sizes, through the functional education and learning cannot be understated. It's just like we call, we go, Network is the greatest school of all time. And that's exactly how we feel, and that's how the revolutionary change it's created for us. It nurtures and heals these kids. When I, I went and did a tour of the school before I ever introduced my son to it, and I stopped kids, every kid that walked by me in the hallway, and I was like, hey, I'm, I'm, let me know about your school. What do you think of your school? And there was not a kid there that didn't say, I love this school. This school has completely changed my life. Not a single kid. And I have taught in middle schools. I've taught in high schools. And that's not usually the case for them to go, I love this school, and it absolutely changed my life. And that is absolutely the case for us. So just thank you so much to Network Charter School. Thank you so much to the board for continuing to support Network in the way that it is supporting our community and these kids and these teachers. All my gratitude. Thank you deeply. Thank you.
Good evening, Superintendent.
You press the button on the right hand side.
Good evening, Superintendent Dae, 4J School Board and staff. For a while now, our society has been moving towards a tribal, us-first-down structure, but this division really intensified over the past three years. Unfortunately, I have been branded as a "them" in this room, leaving me feeling cast out and wondering if my voice is heard. For those who listened to my message when I ran for a seat on this board, I try never to view other candidates as my opponent, as we are all running for similar reasons and providing a public service to our community. I do not fault newly elected board members for feeling frustrated at the constant struggle to elevate the district against lower-vibration forces within our society. I have been on the receiving end of an oppressive board before and felt hopeless against a malignant majority. After being run over by parliamentary procedures, I gained an appreciation for better understanding organizational charters and Robert's Rules of Order to be able to assert a voice for a minority position. Before that, when I served as a planning commissioner at Cottage Grove, who would always have a parliamentary cheat sheet on hand to facilitate basic motions and procedures. So no, I don't fault school board members leveraging parliamentary procedures to ensure that their voice is not drowned out by procedural abuses. What I do fault is defining everything through an oppressor-oppressed lens and then leveraging the victim that associated with the oppressed class. This is not a lesson that I want my children learning, and many members of our community have expressed the same current concern, directly to me, directly to you, on social media, et cetera. Some of these friends and neighbors have been talking about starting a recall for school board members. I advise against this, as I would prefer to see the wounds that have formed mended and to see a reinvigorated collaborative spirit that embraces the diverse set of viewpoints in our community, including the ones that have been actively suppressed. This is where groups like the Oregon Moms Union come in to provide advocacy for concerned parents. I believe some erroneous statements were made in a recent public comment in regards to this group. My understanding is that they have no affiliation with the Heritage Foundation, and they did not endorse candidates, but extended a questionnaire to every candidate listed by the Secretary of State, but can only provide scores for candidates who responded. We ought to see accuracy in our criticisms based in fact and not conjecture. We need to see beyond bias and embrace the unifying message of MLK over the divisive message of BLM. And we have to be able to have this conversation without interrupting, without calling names, and without labeling each other, sure signs of the bullying we wish to prevent in our schools. We need more role models. We need to stop discriminating against members of our community based on whether they injected an emergency authorized mRNA experiment. At the beginning of the year, I was rejected from volunteering at my children's school for not supplying proof of vaccination. And just last week, tried to sign up online as a middle school mentor, but was forced to upload proof of vaccination to complete the process. We're getting hung up on distractions preventing us from raising up our community. We can't engage in discrimination and at the same time tell our children to do as I say and not as I do. We must be better. We must have strong voices, but we must also have strong listening skills and not just listen, but truly hear each other and strive for understanding. Thank you.
Next up, we have Justin McCall. Is Justin here? No. It looks like Justin did not.
Thank you to everybody who are coming and sharing your voice in us. Next up on the agenda, we have comments by employee groups. It's my understanding that we are not hearing from anyone tonight. So we move on to comments and committee reports by individual board members. Alicia, would you like to start?
Yes. I turned this on. So first, I want to thank all the people that came and spoke to us today, the pledge committee applicants. It was great to hear from everyone, and I particularly appreciated the questions they asked, some of them obviously were a little bit of a stumper. And thank you, Maya, for taking notes. Appreciate it. So what I want to talk about today, also I just say about Network Charter, I had a wonderful opportunity to visit because I was on the Charter School Committee, and it was amazing. And I'm sorry, I'm busy on Friday, or else I wouldn't show up. Just the work, the work of the outdoor group and the gift exchange, a gift, I can't remember what they call it, where students can come in and pick gifts out with their family for the holiday season. What, I had some great stories when I was there, so I really appreciate hearing that. I want to say that I had a chance to go to South Dinner Theater. The South play was Miss Bennett's Christmas. In just a second, I have to do this. Let's see. I do own a South Theater sweatshirt. Because when they handed it to me, I said, thanks, yeah, here's $25. It was great. The Dinner Theater was amazing. I had a chance to meet the new teacher there. Great. The students were incredible, and it was just really fun to be back out in the schools for such an event. Also, I know, it sounds like I spent a lot of time at South, but I did get a chance last week also to visit the library at South and to learn more about teacher librarians, which was, I know some of you know more than I do, but I appreciated that staff took the time to explain that to me more in depth. Also, had a chance to talk about the program, and I'm not sure if we want to continue to call it a pilot program. We may switch over from that, but I will use that term to pilot program with the librarians. And had a chance to talk about where things are working and where things could maybe get tweaked. And I'm hoping that we can get an update on that, on those librarians and how things are going, maybe even next steps as we move forward to look at more opportunities for teacher librarians, librarians in the school. So I want to thank everybody who took time to chat with me this week and fill me in on things and look forward to the discussion about Network Charter School for them. Thanks. Don't have to do that. Do that.
Thanks, Alicia. Michelle?
I will repeat what Alicia said. Thanks for all the people who joined and made comments and are eager to participate in making our schools run with accountability and community input. I didn't have meetings this week, but I'm thrilled to hear that Alicia is on board with having teacher librarians in schools, and we can talk more about that. I'm happy to welcome Grant to our meeting today. He is one of our student representatives, and he came in person. Really great to see you. I will be meeting my student representatives at South over the holiday break, and I'm looking forward to getting to know them. Since I did have some free time about meetings, I went back and listened to previous meetings, specifically hearing student representative reports. And it's so interesting to hear how they have a lot of shared and overlapping concerns. And we're working on addressing those concerns, and I'm really looking forward to joining in June break.
Thanks, Michelle.
Judy? Thank you. Kirby?
Hey, I'm probably going to be brief because I still sound like I swallowed a frog over here. I wanted to say welcome. I didn't get a chance, the last board meeting, to welcome the student representatives. Really excited to be getting your input and just spending the time with y'all for the remainder of the year here. I've had, I've been here in the Middle East for a couple of weeks, and I've been sick and jet-lagged a lot, but it's given me some very good time to reflect on here. And I've been working with the public sector administration here as well, too. And a lot of what I've been thinking about is how much so many school districts and so many of our problems are universal. Just in the last week, I've had conversations around, and some of these things may sound familiar, district communications with schools, adoption and rollout of new curriculum, extensive PD hours and how teachers get a chance to plan, children's social emotional learning, especially since even a couple of years after COVID, family disengagement. And lucky me, I got to spend the rest of my nine hours today also discussing school scheduling. So that seems to be the theme for my Thursday over here. What I was thinking about in all of this was that, I mean, change is hard anywhere in the world, especially when we're dealing with our children. Like, there's nothing that is more important. And looking at how the administrations and teachers and school leaders are working together has been just key, and skillsets are not equivalent. And we need all of those people to be creating a system in a community. And one thing I've seen here, along with just meeting all the teachers and some of the people I've met through with 4J, is just holding our children up as the be-all and end-all of why we're all in this. And just looking at what kinds of humans we'd like them to grow into and just making our decisions based on those. So it's been, it's been a good week. I'm looking forward to coming back. And I'm wishing everybody a wonderful holiday season, and we're looking forward to getting back to work. Thanks.
Thank you, Kirby. Judy?
Good evening. I also, last week, didn't take the opportunity to communicate about how excited I am to have met most of our student board reps and have them join us. It's nice to see some here tonight, and I want to just really welcome the board rep students. And I want to just really welcome the board rep students to the board because we really need to hear your voices. It really helps us do a better job at our work. You know, we, we do policies, we do budget, and it's just important that what we're doing is really addressing the social emotional health needs and also academic needs of our students and we won't know how well we're doing without hearing from you. I did have an opportunity to meet individually with my board MAP representative. I didn't know a lot. It's Ren Washington and we had a great visit and I really look forward to getting to know her better. She's at the Eugene Online Academy and I'm also learning a lot more about that program, which I didn't know too much about. So I really enjoyed our conversation. I got to go to, a couple of weeks ago, I went to North Eugene High School to do, help with mock interviews of the 10th graders there. And boy, I was so impressed with how prepared they were and what a great, what a great time that was. I think another board member came at a different shift, but I really appreciated just the one-on-one time and to practice that kind of real life skill that students are going to need to actually go out in the world and get jobs. I also got to meet, and we didn't have a formal committee member meeting, but I met individually with representatives from each one of our employee groups, EEA, OSEA, and MAPS, to talk about legislative priorities. We're going to be voting on our board's legislative priorities and really our hope, we have so much in common with the priorities of those employee groups and our plan is to definitely work together on those priority areas. And that's exciting. They're going to join us at a breakfast as well. And we joined in EEA's legislative breakfast. And then tonight, I just want to end my comments with an expression of gratitude. It just hit me so strongly yesterday, how very fortunate we are to live in a community that really supports public education, really values it deeply and values our kids. I just can't say enough of appreciation for our staff, our parents, our students, and our, the people who vote in this community that really support, support our kids. So I just want to wish everyone some really restful, fun times over break. You've all earned it and I look forward to seeing you in 2023.
Thanks, Judy. Gordon?
Thank you. First, I want to thank the community testified from Network Charter School. I really appreciate the stories and accounts that people gave. And I would really like to see some of the things that have been successfully done there, done in others of the school, in the district. The original idea of charter schools was not to be a segregated school system, but to be a place where experiments could be run and the best things could be lessons that were taken to other schools. And I think there's some things happening in Network and some of the other charter schools that I would love to see happen in others of our school. I'm also thankful to Rob Hess for being willing to give us a little update tonight about the ways that the public can weigh in on standardized testing. And I just want to take a minute to give my own view on this, which is that we have been systematically subjecting students to federally mandated standardized tests for 20 years and along the way, I think torturing both teachers and students by taking what could be interesting, creative, engaging classes and turning them into deadly dull exercises and memorizing learning objectives and regurgitating factoids that are supposed to be evidence of state standards. We were told 20 years ago that standardized testing would help solve equity problems, that it would raise standards, that it would make teaching better by letting teachers know exactly the kind of help their students need, and all of that turned out to be false. After 20 years, the federally mandated standardized tests have done nothing to close equity gaps, don't help teachers identify and address students' needs, and we've seen reading and math scores stay flat or get worse. Standardized tests steal valuable time. We really don't know how much, but from what I hear, as much as 10 days a year, but stolen away from real education. They force schools across the country and here to cut back at everything that's not tested, including science and social studies. And they force teaching in even the tested subjects to become rote, mechanical, and alienated. This board has already made clear its commitment to reducing the time spent on standardized testing, but we only control the tests that are mandated by the district, not those that the state requires under federal mandate. So there's a unique opportunity now where the State Department of Education is considering applying for a waiver from the federal government. So we could do away with, at least for this year, the single most time consuming and it might be wasteful standardized test. Any parent, any member of the community can email to ODE, I did this a long thing, but And I want to thank the district communication staff, the background of this, including that email address will be sent out in the family newsletter going out tomorrow. Obviously, you can use that link to weigh in pro or con, you don't have to agree with me, but I encourage members of the community to weigh in on this because it's a unique opportunity. Thank you.
Thanks, Gordon. Laurel, do you want to go next?
Sure. I'm someone who looks forward, but it's important to learn from our past. The November 16th board meeting, this board decided not to follow our policy, our racial harassment policy, and decided not to investigate a racial harassment complaint that I had put in. So what that means is we're not following our own board policy and our policy is our law. So I say that so I know this is on public record, so you understand that there has been no investigation, though others have claimed that there has been. It's important when we do not follow our own rules because what do, what does the public have? What does our students have? What does our educators and staff have but the policy and rules that we put forth? Why are we here? If we're making things, we need to follow them. So moving from that, I will say I'm very excited about the work that Network Charter does. They, my son, I have five children that went to 4J schools. Three of them have ITPs. I had to fight. The reason I'm on this board is I had to fight tooth and nail for my children to just be seen and recognized and given a minimum of the education that they needed. I also had the benefit of being a veteran and a military member and that I, only, my daughter reminds me, she went to 14 different schools? Sorry, wrong time. That's what, that's what the army gives you. She's the oldest of the five. But that is a rare benefit in that I was privy to many different school districts and I've seen how it's done. And this has been the hardest place for my kids that need special education, as they call it right now, but really it's just education, to get what they need. And I'm not blaming educators. I'm blaming our systems because our educators are held to a tight, tight system, which I didn't know this as a parent, so all parents pay attention to this because they have to follow these rules. And I know that our new leadership in the district with Andy, we are having these discussions that I wanted to change 10 years ago. So I'm impatient for this. I'm saying this because my son has been in Network Charter. He's my youngest of the five, who has an IP since last year because he was miserable, depressed, talking about... Sorry, I didn't know I was going to get so emotional, but not living. And he's a good kid. He drives me crazy and that's his job. He's 17. What 17-year-old doesn't drive you insane? And he didn't deserve what happened at 4J, which is he didn't know his value and worth and it's built into our system. He absolutely knows his value and worth at Network Charter. They jazz up to him, they teach it, they, it's part of their system. I hope they can work, like other board members have said, with 4J to help embed this into our system because this is going to sound like verbally, but they are saving lives. They are taking the kids, which they call tier three in this response to, I hope I'm saying this right because I'm not an educator, but I'm using your words, response to intervention. There's three tiers and they say most of the kids are at one and there's kids at two and three is the hardest. Most of the kids at Network come in at a three, the majority are threes. So what we're saying, when we have this whole dossier that we're going to, we're deciding on for their charter, it's, it's looking at them from the 4J kind of way you look at it, like, oh, if only you had more kids that graduated, only if you did this better, if only you did this better. But the reality is they're amazing because if you look at who they're working with, these amazing kids who have suffered and have come in from other schools where they're like, I'm a piece of crap, why are you talking to me? And those teachers and educators are saying, hey, I can teach you how to cook, I can help you learn photography, you can do this. Math, I know sucks, but also have you looked at it this way? And I'm telling you, they are doing amazing work and we need, I wish they were even bigger. I'm sorry, they probably don't know if they were bigger, but they're amazing. And I just want everybody, the board, I think a lot of the board knows it, but I think the public needs to know because if you have a child who is suffering and if they, I don't know where they are because they have middle school to high school, but go find out what they're doing. Because what we do in education is teach kids, but if you do not know your self-worth, you can't take in that education. You can't. You can't know what you can do. And bit by bit, my son, who thought he was an idiot at 4J, is like smiling and enjoying going to school and having a good time and making friends for the first time. It's an amazing place and they're not just teaching kids. They are helping kids know who they are. Thank you.
As a former Network Charter School teacher, parent, and board member, I want to say how warmed my heart is hearing from the four Network folks who shared with us tonight and especially Laurel right now. I can concur that everything that all five of you have said is completely aligned with my personal experience as well. But I want to especially say thank you to Colin. Thank you for sharing your experience as a student, as a member of the stakeholder group that is most impacted by the existence of Network Charter School. Your perspective is invaluable and incomparable. I want to say thank you also to the Budget Committee finalists for your interest in serving on our Budget Committee and for the time and energy you put into your applications and interviews. We are so lucky to serve on a board in a community with such strong interest in supporting our school district. As Michelle mentioned, with our last meeting only a week ago, I also do not have anything to report regarding committee work, so I will jump into sharing appreciation for a member of our 4J staff. This is the sixth installment of what I'm calling the heart of 4J. The transition from elementary to middle school is notoriously and undeniably rough for many students. Supporting students in this moment is something 4J works hard to do. It's not an easy task and it takes a tremendous amount of attention, care, and genuine love for young folks to do this work with grace and success. And that's just the start of middle school. The three years that follow the transition are reputed for good reason, as often being amongst the most challenging years. And yet so often, those who choose to work with middle schoolers do so with enthusiasm and excel in making connections and lending support. So today, I want to spotlight one such staff member, Brenda Narayan-Wold, counselor at Kelly Middle School. Brenda came to Kelly after years at the elementary level, serving in a Kornak community. This experience at multiple levels has allowed Brenda to cultivate an understanding of the student experience that is broad reaching and has allowed her to nurture students throughout the K-8 experience. This wide lens of experience makes for a clear window into the needs of our young middle schoolers. That coupled with an uncanny ability to see the big picture regarding educational systems and those that are inevitably intertwined, such as housing, childcare, access to employment, and more, informs Brenda's work on a daily basis. To quote a colleague of hers, Brenda is so tuned into the big picture and more importantly, she is able to take that big picture and use it to communicate with individual students and families, but also to make systematic observations and share those observations clearly with folks in decision-making positions. Part of this notion of seeing the big picture is connected to seeing the challenges our students face due to longstanding inequitable systems, practices, policies, and outcomes. Brenda works diligently both within the context of her work directly to students, but also in a broader context as well, to incorporate an equity lens to everything she does. Brenda's ability to see the intersections students and their families experienced, experience are noticed and celebrated by her coworkers. Another colleague shared this, Brenda brings an energy to this work that is hard to match. She cares deeply about equity issues and really seeing students who feel marginalized in our systems. She's an authentic communicator who is able to wrap around those students and parents so they stay engaged where there seem to be so many reasons to disengage. Yet another colleague, a teacher in the Spanish immersion program, notes, Brenda beautifully bridges the communication gap with our Spanish-speaking families. This has been so helpful for our community. I can't sum it up better than a parent of a sixth grader at Kelly Middle School. At the start of the year, at the height of the transition to not only a new school, but the very unique world of middle school itself, a parent of a Kelly sixth grader declared, I love my kid's counselor. She goes on to expand, the first thing Brenda said to me was, okay, so I just want you to know that I think your kid is just so cool. This parent concluded with what is possibly the synopsis of what every parent, every caregiver, every person who loves a 4J student hopes for. She seems to really get my kid and that's such a huge weight off my shoulders. So thank you, Brenda, for bringing your heart into your work and for being such an important part of, part of 4J. And now we move on to the consent group, items for action. So Laurel?
I would like the minutes to be changed to reflect the accurate end of the meeting on November 16.
Okay, so would you like to pull the minutes from the consent agenda to consider them separately?
I think that's fair. Yeah.
Okay. So item four from the consent agenda is pulled. We will discuss it after the other four. Do we have a motion for items one, two, three, and five? Gordon?
I'm moving to adopt the consent agenda with the exception of item four.
Is there a second? Judy?
A second.
Okay. So all those in favor of approving the consent agenda with the exception of item number four, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
I see all board members have their hand raised, so we get passes with consensus, with yeses from Maya Rabasa, Gordon Labor, Michelle Shu, Alicia Hayes, Judy Newman, and Kirby Hasid, Tom Hahnman. Item number four, we pulled separately. Laurel, do you want to speak to that or make a motion?
I would like to make a motion that, that it is listened to by staff and the minutes reflect what actually happened. Specifically, besides the words that happened, that the meeting was ended against the policies of the district and the board. There needs to be a vote to end a meeting and there was no vote. It was ended abruptly by the board chair.
Okay.
So it needs to say that, they cannot say it was adjourned because it was not.
So can you state that as a motion?
The motion is that the staff would listen to it, since I don't write the minutes, I'm not presumed to, that the staff would listen and write the minutes accurately to portray what did happen.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay. Alicia, second stat. Is there a discussion? Alicia?
The best way to go about this is for staff to listen. That's fine.
I also, even though I don't write minutes, I, I agree with what Laurel says. I don't see where it says it was adjourned, or I apologize. Oh, there, adjourned. Right. That it reflect above where it says the chair, you know, addresses the issue. Because everybody's seen it and this kind of makes it look like there wasn't an issue. So I, I think we have to capture that for the reality and that, minutes shouldn't say, oh, Ms. Rabasa, am I talking too much? Are you good with this?
No, you're doing discussions.
Shouldn't have guessed, you know, she ended the meeting abruptly because. So I think that's a kind of a tough place to be and I guess I would, I don't know that sitting up here trying to figure it out is a good idea, but I am fine sending it back and asking for some help from the professionals about how we do reflect that. So that's why I second it and why I vote for that to be looked at and we as a board can decide what works for us.
Gordon?
I guess I've, I've heard two different things. One is the question of whether there was a violation of proper tools or our policy that the way the meeting was adjourned. I don't know, I, I'm not aware that there was, but I'm not an expert in that. But that seems like it's not about listening to it, but somebody that could be on staff or whoever makes that determination. And then what you were, what I understood you to be talking about, Alicia, is a different thing, which is characterizing the disagreement or whatever it was that went up to that moment. And that, I don't, I guess, I guess for me, I feel like the first one, I'm good with, whoever should do it, somebody on staff can figure out if that conflicted with policy or proper tools. The second one, it feels like, I'm fine with staff using their judgment, but it feels like there's a lot of things, you know, we've had a lot of heated conversations over the last few years and we don't like try to characterize all of them in a way that, you know, gets down to different people's ideas of what was said. And we have, we have the public recording for anybody to see, it's, it's public record. So I guess I would support the, the first part of that, of somebody looking at whether it's, and I'm not sure, I don't really want to ask staff to say, well, look at this and characterize what this disagreement was about. Say it was a disagreement, didn't share adjourned the meeting. I don't know if there's something I'm missing.
Is there any other discussion?
And sorry, just to clarify, I didn't hear that as part of the motion and the motion can be clarified, I just want to be clear on what we're voting on when we do vote. What I heard being as, that the staff would review it to see if there was a violation of policy or proper tools in the way the meeting was adjourned. I'm sorry?
That wasn't said.
So can, why don't you restate what you want us to vote on?
I said the motion was for it to go back to staff to accurately portray what happened during the meeting. They don't, minutes do not ever make decisions upon who's right or wrong. They accurately portray what happens during a meeting. So that's all that needs to happen, that it needs to state. That it could say whatever, there was a point of order, that anything can be said, but it should be reflected accurately. And it's not accurate. It looks like nothing happened and that's inaccurate. Because we all know that was something, was very inaccurate about it. But that's why I don't want it to be me, because I think it's more important for staff be able to look at it impartially and read it and write the minutes.
Kirti?
I just wanted to say I'm fine with the original motion as Laurel had it, which is an accurate reflection of the record as viewed by staff without any judgment on it because we're all going to have different things on it. But I'm supportive, I feel like if it needs to be an accurate record, then it should reflect that.
Alicia?
It's fine. So experience is what you get when you don't get what you want. And we got some experience of that maybe. And I think, you know, we didn't put in, Laurel didn't say point of order and somebody else said, well, if you make a point of order, you have to have a, you know, you have to go to a vote and if, you know, to accurately reflect is that happened, it was confusing. We joined the meeting abruptly, you know, I would say might be because we weren't getting it done, we were just in that situation, time's up. Like, I'm not writing the minutes and nor do I want the minutes recorded to write that. But the meeting was adjourned abruptly, I'm fine with that because that is what happened. We own it, we learned from it. I didn't know point of order could be, you know, learned a little something about proper tools. So, and that's what I want, that's what I would like to see happen.
Is there any more discussion before we do it?
Well, my understanding is that staff does. And so I don't know who you're asking. And we need staff to be more subjective or objective. I mean, it's just, it depends on who is doing the recording and. As Gordon referred, I think supporting it on this public record and anyone who's interested in seeing what happened can go back and watch themselves.
So Brenda, that?
I think that we can, based on this conversation, try to amend the minutes to better reflect some of the confusion occurred so that for the sake of posterity, we can look back on it and learn moving forward. I don't know that that'll be, probably wouldn't editorialize or take, take a stance, but we can do our best to craft an accurate summary of the manner in which the meeting ended. At some point that should be.
Gordon?
I'll just say briefly, I mean, I, I do think that obviously that's what staff do, the minutes are much shorter than the transcript of the meeting. And so we started saying, and the fact that the meeting was adjourned, you know, abruptly, whatever you want to say, obviously, we're all there, anybody can watch and take, anybody can read the transcript, but then we're gonna say, oh, it was abruptly, but it was after this was said, but that was after this was said. And I think, I feel like to put staff in a, in an unfair position to say, we want you to capture, you know, what we think was the spirit of what happened. And if there's no, if there's no, and without the question of asking somebody to resolve whether the meeting was ended properly or not, then that's all varies as far as I can see. So it's not that big a deal, but it's not something I'm supporting.
I'm gonna add myself to the queue. I, I think it's our responsibility to approve accurate minutes. I, in the past have sent in my noticeings about mistakes in the minutes and they get fixed. So if the minutes are inaccurate and I see our minute taker nodding their head, that, that we, there's no reason for minutes to not be as accurate as possible. So if there aren't further comments or discussion, then I don't see Kirti either. Let's vote to have the minutes be amended to accurately reflect the meeting from November 16th, 2022. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I see yeses from Maya Rabasa, Michelle Shu, Alicia Hayes, Judy Newman, Kirti Hasidja Kaufman and Laurel Loer. All those opposed, raise your hand and say nay. And that's a nay from Gordon Labor, the motion passes six to one. And we move on to items for information. First we have, oh, we have two items for information this evening. The next.
The third one.
The state test waiver is an item for information. Yes, thank you. So at the beginning of the meeting, we added an item for information to learn about the waiver being sought by the state of Oregon regarding standardized testing. I think Chief of Staff, Rob Hess, is going to give us a little background on that.
Yes, in last spring, Governor Brown signed, assigned into law Senate Bill 1583. And that Senate bill required the state of Oregon to submit a waiver for the 2324 state test and to the federal government. And the purpose of that law was to basically find ways for the state to limit the amount of time that some of the tests are taking and come up with alternatives and creative solutions and to study this. So that was signed into law and part of requesting the waiver is getting public comment and feedback. So this opportunity, the email address that, that Director Lefer shared at the beginning of the meeting is a way that the public can send in their, their feedback regarding state testing and amount of time spent on state testing and asking the federal government to give us permission to study this issue and to see if we can design effective assessments that take less instructional time away from our students. So that's the brief background of Senate Bill 1583. It's a very short bill, it's a, it's a one paragraph read there that was signed into law last spring. So this is a waiver that ODE is putting forward and part of that waiver is public comment. So this is a, a good opportunity for us to express that we, we can do better when it comes to the, the amount of time it takes to assess our students and come up with more authentic assessments. Yes, Director Newman?
Thanks. So we're gonna, there is actually an actual waiver to give feedback on, right?
Yeah, the, the, the ODE submits a waiver and this is public comment, it's a part of the waiver.
So we're gonna post on our website a link to be able to read the waiver and to get feedback with the email, correct? Is that, yeah, good. So if people are interested, they should look there. Because sometimes it's hard to find those things on government sites, so I appreciate that.
Yes, I agree.
Are there any other questions or comments?
The, the deadline to submit comments is December 31st.
Okay, thank you, Rob, that was helpful. Next up, as an item for information this evening, we have receiving the quarterly financial report out of September 30th, 2022. We have Matt Brown, Director of Financial Services to present and Joe Cuadros, interim Director of Nutrition Services is here as well if you have any questions for her. She is attending virtually for those that are looking for her. Looking for her in the room. Go ahead.
Good evening. So you have the quarterly financial reporting in front of you, so you have the information from July 1st through September 30th in front of you. And I'm here to answer any questions that you may have regarding Matt or anybody else. Overall, everything is pretty on track for what we expect. There's no surprises that myself or our staff see in the financial informations or reports or actuals that we see. So nothing bad or indifference reported, everything is okay.
Well, I want to first say thank you. I think this is our first time seeing you this year, so an official welcome to the district.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone who has questions while we have them here in front of us?
I like the question person today, no, I do appreciate this and I think, when I was just reading the summary, so in January, we're going to see a five-year forecast and I know, you know, early on, the, you know, what we spent hasn't really kept up, you know, it takes a while to see where we are.
It does take a little while, you're gonna see a more accurate picture in the next quarter as you probably are aware, you receive a majority of your revenue through property taxes, so that usually hits in that November, December timeframe. So you'll see a large job of revenue received. Your expenses, your budget is 86 or 85% personnel, so it's pretty standardized quarter to quarter, unless you're changing FTEs and teachers around, which we do a fair amount around here, trying to get everything honed into where it should be for the direction of the district.
Alicia?
Can you talk to me about funds 280 and 290? They seem a little, guessing you're gonna shift some of those around. But we're at 116% spent in salaries, but it's really not that much in salaries, so.
Correct, so at the beginning of the year, we put in obviously what our estimated budget is. There are a lot of fluctuations and changes around the September timeframe and a lot of that has to do with how we're spending a lot of our grant funds. So those would be like the 200 funds that you see up above. So there's a lot of journal entries and projections and as we fluctuate with teachers and get directions, Rob, Dr. Dye and directors to move teachers to this point or this person should be charged here, there are a lot of fluctuations within the first, I would say probably four or five months of the school year to where we really get an accurate picture. So I do expect those journal entries will adjust and, will adjust the salary of the budget, you know, all kind of flush out again.
Thank you.
But nothing to be concerned about.
Nothing to see here.
Laurel?
Is there anything that you feel that we should pay closer attention to? That maybe it's not a worry for you at this point, but is there something that made you go, hmm, I'm gonna keep my eye on that?
I wouldn't say overall, I think being new in my position, there's always a large learning curve, especially where I came from, about 12 or 13 years in municipal government. So still public finance, but moving over to education, still is a pretty big difference and there is a large learning curve that we're, that I'm going through myself. And some of our staff is referring to financial software and everything that that involves. So overall, I would say the best thing that I can request from you as a board is for us to create a balanced investment budget for the district. It really relies on you as board members, Director Dye, to give direction and vision of what you want this district to be. And my job is to entail those goals and that direction in a budget manner to make sure that we're allocating resources in the best way. So if I can ask for anything from the board, if Dr. Dye is giving us clear direction on what path we want to go.
That's helpful, thank you.
Are there any more questions from Matt, while we have him? Well, thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
Moving on to hear from Jill Cuadros, if we have any questions for her? Does anybody have questions for Jill? Judy? Okay, I thought I heard you. Okay, well, yes, Laurel?
Does this show accurately if we have? My kids. So I'm always concerned because we've had it in the past. It's further in the past now, but kids that couldn't, couldn't have access to food because they couldn't pay. So I assume we still have kids paying something or every single kid never pays anything. So basically we're just, even those that can.
Breakfast and lunch are free to all students of 4J.
Okay. Okay, I mean, okay, that's good. I just, is there space for, I know we decided on this last year, but is there space at all for those that have the means to pay? I mean, is that, equity is also, part of that is realizing that there are those that can and will pay.
So Brenda, that?
Jill, do you want to say anything to that, given your perspective and then I can offer mine?
Absolutely, of course there is the opportunity, we would need to adjust the decision that we made from the Budget Committee and the Board early March to June when we made that decision. But we certainly could take a look at it and readjust. Antidoteally, I have had a, a couple of families who have sent in donations saying, hey, I really appreciate what you've done at the district and I what you've done at the district, and I can see the value in that, but we can pay. And so here, if you could put this to your bottom line, please do so. And we, we do thank those families that do that for us. Yeah.
Yeah, there's absolutely ways that, it doesn't have to be either or. I think a good idea would be to hash that out as we go through the budgeting process for this next year. That gives us some time to gather information. We know that students and families are more willing to fill out the paperwork and identify the need for free reduced lunch as a younger student and less likely to do so as a later student. So there might be a better way to do this than we have in the past.
Okay, thanks.
Judy?
I just wanted to ask, I know we're not serving food in a restricted way anymore, so hopefully we're back on track with our in-house cooking and our nutrition. I just wondered if you give us an idea of how that's going and buying locally from some of our farmers. That was exciting, and we had to take a hiatus from it for a while. So how would you say that's going?
I, I do think it's going really well. We're working very closely with a number of new farmers. We have a purple radish that came out last week in our fresh fruits and vegetables program that I think kids have a lot of fun trying. It would be most visible on the salad bars. And I did include a little photo of one of our salad bars in the write-up there for you to see. It happened in, on hold this morning, and they looked just as beautiful this morning as the day that I took that photo. So I can guarantee that it's that salad bar that we have at the, all the way at all levels, that is providing that opportunity for the local farmers to get their products on, in front of our kiddos. Yeah. I could also probably highlight for you the notion that from last year to this year, we are able to have more offerings on our menus. And so our high school students, for example, are choosing from four entree options every day versus being very, one choice fits all, the way we were during the supply chain difficulties that we saw last year. And so that is showing an increase to participation at our, both our middle school and our high school level. A middle school students are receiving two to three options every day so that build a meal that you choose to eat and also fill it up with that salad bar is very, very popular this year.
There's no more questions. We'll say thank you, Jill, for spending time with us and sharing this with us. Thank you. All right. And then last item for information is a report on the high school schedule for 2023, 24. Turn it over to you, Superintendent Dunn.
That is me. Are we going to? Yes, we are. We've got a very, very brief slideshow. This serves as an update to our progress thus far. Some decisions have been made, but we find ourselves now at a point of implementation which includes a cascade of smaller but equally as important decisions. And I want to talk a little bit about how we'll go about that. But first, give you a bit of background. We, since September of this year, we've worked with a cross-district team consisting of teachers from a variety of different content areas, areas of specialization, administrators, there were some middle school folks at the table, EEA representatives were at the table, as well as district office admin and building admin, to review high school schedules and see whether or not we needed to take some time to look at something other than three by five. And there was fairly universal agreement that something else would be in our best interests. We began by building, building on feedback collected from team representatives after conversations with their schools, coupled with thoughts from students and families, to try to frame our decision properly and base any decisions that we made on course set of values that were universally shared. And I'd like to talk a bit about those. It's very easy for us to, in conversations about schedules, to try to pick a schedule that's a semester with this number of classes or really focus on the schedule itself. Instead, what we want, what we want set up to do was to say, what is it that our final decision should allow for? What are the most important criteria and the most important values that we need to ensure that our structures make room for? And those were to develop a schedule that prioritizes the needs of special education and English language learning services, and a schedule that would allow students to receive interventions and more access to class electives. The second was to allow for flexibility within the schedule for students to access affinity groups, enrichment and extensions and interventions. There was a need to increase planning and collaboration time, provide a schedule that promotes positive relationships for students and parents. And we wanted to ensure that we maintained or decreased class size. And so all of the, some of those are fairly competing interests. And so the desire was to try to optimize the degree to which we can find a schedule for all of those. In addition to the guided values, the scheduling team built representative, building representative, collected input from our colleagues. This input assisted as they began to frame wonderings about schedule alternatives. So it wasn't that we studied one potential schedule. We really took the time to make sure that we understood those values in the same way and shared those with the community so that they could give us their thoughts on their values as well, and the degree to which those values align with their thinking. Thank you, Jen, for reading my mind. In terms of stakeholder feedback, we use the thought exchange as a platform to collect insight from families and students and some teacher, or excuse me, and teachers on what items should be considered to support student success. We had more than 3,500 individuals participate in the three thought exchanges, contributing 3,000 thoughts and 69,764 rankings. Ultimately, the input validated the team, the working teams' thinking about the established values and prioritize of, excuse me, of prioritizing flexibility and options for students within the schedule. Those were not the only things that were of a high priority, but the notion that there would be more access to electives for students that maybe wanted to take a full year of a language, or wanted to be involved and have it, or did receive additional support from a learning specialist. Oftentimes, those decisions are made instead of an elective, and we wanted to not have it in either or situation. So what, what the team did was present what they believed to be competing alternatives, schedules that they believed met those criteria. And that was then delivered to the decision-making team, which was represented by the superintendent's cabinet, two assistant superintendents of instruction, in the instruction department, chief operations officer, chief administrative officer, the Department of Equity Inclusion directors, director of technology, so that we could run through some of the more dry, useless factuality. How much would it cost? What are the implications on technology, staffing to develop a new schedule? What would be the implications on transportation? And what we, we looked at was each of the members of the working team ranked each schedule based on their belief that it would allow for each of the criteria. And the two by four ABC schedule, which is absolutely education ease, but it's a semester schedule with four periods in each of two alternating days. Subset in a five-day week, you would have two A days, periods one, two, three, four, and two B days, periods five, six, seven, and eight, with a C day, which is what we would also refer to as a flex day, a day with shorter classes, four shorter classes, one week, period one, two, three, four, the next week, period five, six, seven, and eight, that allowed for what we're referring to as flex periods. And that's a time in which a student can still get their core content, can still go to the electives that they've chosen, and within the contact day, can get interventions, read through a lab, get some support from a teacher, maybe take an extension class. We would hope that this schedule would offer the opportunity for teachers to develop and teach classes that they're really, really into and that students have a high interest in, beyond the eight periods that they teach. Like beekeeping, that has been so popular in the summer. Like Black History 365, which teachers are really excited to begin to plan and develop, but don't have the time to do it for a 90-minute class for an entire semester or year, and want to start with a digestible amount. So that students can attend affinity group meetings, that they don't choose between going to lunch or missing the class and going to their affinity group. We believe that a day like a C day presents lots of flexibility and possibility, and by no means have all those decisions been made. That's what we would do in collaboration with students and teachers as we move through the rest of our process towards this next year. And the next slide gives you a visual sense of where we are. Got together at the beginning of August. Very much appreciate everyone who has spent a considerable amount of time and conversation outside of our contract. We couldn't be here without them. And you'll see, we're, we're right in the middle. We have gotten to a point of decision, and a quality decision absolutely requires a commitment to follow through. And now what we have to do is work with our respective folks to ensure that the right decisions are made about what do those C days look like, exactly when the bells ring. So over, over the coming months, you'll, the community will have the benefit of seeing a schedule with an action plan as to how time will be used, who will be involved in meetings, updated progress on the decisions that have been made over time, ideally in a way that is accessible to absolutely everyone with a click of a button, rather than having to find the right person and ask the right question at the right time. We know that schedules have a significant impact on the way in which students move through their day. I believe that this will allow for a more managed pace of each day for both students and teachers, increase over the course of a year, the number of courses that a credit, or student, excuse me, the number of credits that a student can earn. But the schedule is just the schedule. And it's the decisions that we make and the things that we do within that schedule that make all of the difference. If it was a schedule that was gonna get us to 95% graduation rate and zero dropouts, somebody would have found that a long, long time ago. It's the decisions that we make and who we prioritize. So scheduling first within the master schedule, what are the courses that students with an IP need? Where do we put the electives so that they can also access electives? How do we distribute English language learning support classes over the course of the day so that they're not right up against a more popular elective? And that they have to make a choice for one rather than the other? So we'll be answering questions, I will so right now, but there'll be lots of information to come. We had committed to getting this out before winter break, and that's exactly what we've done. This is the decision and just the first part. But we also commit to transparency and lots of communication and getting feedback from stakeholders throughout the remainder of the process for sure. I'd happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Laurel? I would like to see some data around changing to a semester system. Since I'm, as far as I understand, the majority of the Northwest is on term system. And we have kids in different schools. We have, I'm just thinking of family schedules and things like that. So I'd love to understand the amount of people that are, not just people, but in all the schooling that is going on in, in our area, but also exponentially, how many people, and I'm not talking nationally, because we know other states all use semester systems, right? Even our law school uses the semester system. At U of A. So, but I'm saying, here with us, one thing I've noticed is that if I have a kid in one school and one schedule, and a kid in another school and another schedule, I'm a parent help. So I just want to make sure I understand that really well and get a lot of data to, and if other people have done it in our state, I'd love to know that stuff, too.
Sure.
Like, yeah, we've done it, we love it. Or, yeah, we've done it, these are the issues. Things like that. And I guess going along with that would also be just the issues around, like best practices and what you guys have learned. I love that we do the stakeholders all communication about this. I have not seen since I got back to you, Jean. It's my kids. So it's exciting to see. And I think that should be recognized, that we're out there talking to community and saying, what do you want? But I also would love to know what we know as professionals, you know, the people who do this work, and what, what is the best way to go about it? What have, this, I'm sure, there are people that have written novels about this, lots of books, but the digestible ways. The other, I'll say just one more thing. The other thing I'm worried about is getting tons of stuff at different times. So I've just, be very, having it very clearly defined what we're getting and when we're getting it would be really helpful for me because I'm doing a lot right now, and I want to make sure I'm really aware.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Felicia? First, thank you very much. I want to thank everybody that was on the committee. I know I was on board, meaning, who is the board took on the job of looking at schedules. And thank goodness, we realized it was a superintendent's responsibility. And I also, we talked years ago about wanting to change this. So I'm very happy that, for me, I'm very happy that you have embarked on this and that you've taken this particular tack on how to manage this and to get the best result. It's incredibly creative. I, I guess, I'll be curious to hear from people who now have a responsibility to build curriculum, the teachers and so forth, and make sure that this isn't overwhelming. I personally don't think I could remember A and B, but not in school. But that whole C concept, so it's, it's very creative, it's very thoughtful in not just classes, but in everything else you talked about. So I'll just be really curious for the folks that are going to deal with this day to day, whether they have the time and resources to build those curriculums that have many classes. One more question.
Kennedy?
Hi, and sorry, let me start. I have a coffee fit in the middle of this. I wanted to say thanks to Dr. Dye and the team, because there's clearly a lot of thought put into this. And I love that it started with the value statements. I firmly believe that's where all of the decisions should be starting from. So I really appreciate that that's where it came from and the stakeholders that went into it. I am 100% biased on this. This is, I love these schedules. I think having gone through it, having neurodivergences, having multiple interests in subject matters that were never allowed for any kind of depth to explore in high school. This was one of the best experiences that I had and some systems that have stayed with it. So it allowed for an amazing level of experiential learning, having time for people to be actually to work on the stuff they're doing and not be, for children who have issues with executive function and things like that, to be, be able to spend some time getting their work in, spending time on subject matters. And it allowed for some really in-depth relationships with teachers, because we actually spent time in the classrooms. And they got to know their children and not just be administrating, basically, or administering for those things. So those are my biased opinions on this. I will say that data does support some of these things, too. And like Laurel said, if we have that, and I think it would be helpful, too, especially in communicating some of these out, to people who aren't, haven't been part of the process, I think will be super helpful. I know how difficult it is to get school schedules right, and I can't even imagine the amount of like thought that has been into this. So I do want to continue to say thank you for that. We all know where implementation is, where rubber hits the road. So I think that any support that we can provide in terms of communicating and stuff, to please let us know as a board level, what, like, we can be able to help on some of that in terms of transitioning. And I, I know it's gonna be difficult, like, as a change is hard. It's hard for everything. There's, logistics are probably the most obnoxious part of running a school district. So I just, I mean, I just wanted to say thanks. I appreciate so much the work that is, and thoughts kind of, too. I appreciate so much the work that is and thoughts kind of too. And I really appreciate having the community input. And I'm looking forward to seeing what the next couple of years are going to look like for our district with this.
Judy. Sorry, some people left. And I see some people in the room that worked on this process. And I'm really, I'm really excited about the process you want to use to get to where you are. So I appreciate that, you know, basing it on what are we trying to achieve? Because there are no perfect schedules. And I also know the last schedule we had, I don't think I talked to anyone who liked it. So it'd be great if we could do better, for sure. I just have one question, it doesn't have to be answered now. But I know when I was, I've heard from a lot of families, one frustration is students don't have full schedules at times. They can't get all the classes they want. They're not offered at the times they are. I really, again, I don't know as much about basic schedules, but that would be something I'd like to know, is this going to make it worse, better? Saying, you know, what are some of the issues? But that's something I've heard as a reoccurring theme. In addition to not having the opportunities to experiment and try things. If I want to do band, I can't do this. And so I'm really happy that this has some potential for that. So that would be one question to consider.
Laurel.
I had a question about high school start time because it's early. And is there any room in that, for that? Has that been part of the discussion? Because I know we all talk about kids not doing well in that first hour.
Sure. With this new schedule, a student has the opportunity to earn at least eight credits each year of the four years, so 32 credits. 24 are required. So if a student, if a family decides that what they want is they want their student to start at the second period because they don't operate well. Their cycle isn't such that getting up at that hour doesn't result in major family strife on a daily basis. That's a possibility and a choice that a family can take. That was really one consideration. We couldn't shift the entire day for everyone because that ran into creating constraints in conversation or constraints and conflicts for other families. But within the schedule, students and families have a choice.
That's exciting and huge.
Michelle.
I'm really relieved to hear that because that zero period is, it's hard.
Rather early.
It's so early. It's too early for anyone. I'm grateful to everyone who participated in creating this new, this new schedule. It sounds like there were a lot of different voices at the table, which is what we've been asking for. And as Kirti had mentioned, to, to becoming from it, from a value-based perspective, whether everyone will love it or not, there will be foundational support from the people who invested their time and energy in creating it. And I love that there's one speaking.
I'd like to. I, you had said that you didn't hear Judy, anyone that liked the 3x5. And I imagine now we will.
Probably.
And that's okay. Not everyone is going to love the schedule that we have decided upon. We still want to hear on how we can make it better. I think at this point, our role is to have a conversation with teachers and with staff and see what time is necessary in order to prepare. What do we need to move out of the way? How do we maximize the supports available to students and families, teachers and staff so that everyone feels as prepared for the beginning of next year as we can possibly get?
Go ahead, Alicia, and then I'll go after you.
Screen, will you tell Tabby his change?
I just want to, I don't want to repeat what everybody said except Bear's repeating that not only centering this about a value statement, but the value statement that he did center around. Because it could have been many different things. I think it's, just, I'm really excited that this schedule is focusing on improving access and options for our students who are on 504 plans and IEPs and our English language learners. That feels really transformational to me. I want to make sure, and I just appreciate that you said setting our staff up and our families, et cetera, better staff up to enter the new year as successful as possible. And I know that this is already under radar, but I just want to say it out loud so that it's on everybody's radar. But making sure that as we move into our next steps, that we really diligently set aside time and protect that time for staff to shift. Because we're asking for a huge shift in not just mindset, but also practice. And both of those at the same time are really, can be really overwhelming. And I think that that will help alleviate some of the main concerns that we will be hearing. So I just want to just emphasize that and say it out loud so that it's out there. The last thing, Laurel, when you asked about the semesters, for me, this is one of the first things that I thought of because 4J has semesters for elementary and trimesters for high school and middle school. And as a parent of an elementary and a high schooler, it is really frustrating. So just within our little microcosm of a school district, we're now going to be aligned. We haven't been aligned for so long. So I'm really happy that that's happening. I don't know if this is just anecdotal, not data data. But I think that it's, I think that doesn't preclude us from having families who have kids in different districts. But within the context of the 4J system, we'll finally have a calendar that's aligned, which to me is also an aside of this that is really exciting. So thank you. Yes?
Yeah, again, a reminder that this discussion was about high school. And now we will go into, after winter break, a conversation about not what the middle school schedule is going to be, but what should the middle school experience be? And then, once we have some common values around what the middle school experience should be, then we can decide on what schedule best fits that experience or allows for that experience and what makes for a really optimized, smooth transition from the middle years into the high school years. So I don't want anyone listening to think that we have just changed the middle school schedule, but I want you to rest assured that we are going to engage in those conversations in really short order along the same timeline.
Laurel.
Will that mean a change at the same time? Like, are you going to delay high school schedule change in order to do it? Because otherwise we'll have a lot of different schedules. I don't, as far as I know, for grade school, they don't go, move to different places all the time. And it's really middle and high school where this really affects people.
We want a schedule that allows secondary students, regardless of middle or high, to have the same transition points where teachers are grading and they have planning days in between terms where you don't have some students in school and some students out.
Oh, yeah, that is a fresh option. Especially when it's all different days for every kid.
Well, thank you, Superintendent Dai, that is very exciting. Next up on our agenda is items for action. I have been informed that Kirti has to leave at 9 o'clock. So if there is no objection, I'm going to propose that we save the legislative priorities, action items for the end of that part of our agenda and move into the approve the budget committee member so that Kirti can partake in that process. Okay, so then let's move into the budget committee member approval. Rob, would you like to start that process?
Yes, thank you. So in, you, there was a total of 15 budget members apply for one open position. And then you narrowed the field to five. You interviewed those today in a work session. And now is the time of the agenda for you to appoint one of the five of our interviewees. So in the board packet there, one of the things that I failed to mention in that process that's written there is we have policy BDD that talks about when, that we defer to Robert's Rules of Order whenever to run our meetings unless we have specific policy or law that tells us different. And the method of nominating someone to a position such as this, this is where that comes from, right? So that's, and I know that this is not the traditional way that you have selected members. So if you want to do something different, that's fine, that's up to you. But I did want to just put this in there because I know we've had an emphasis on trying to adhere to our policies as often as possible. So the way this works, according to elect someone, is that the way the Robert's Rules of Order work on the nomination and appointment of people is that a board member would make a motion to appoint someone. And if that motion received a second, that person would be discussed. And then a vote would be taken. If there was four votes for that person, that was discussed and they would be appointed. If they didn't receive four votes, then someone else would make a motion on a different one. So the process can take a little while to discuss. You can discuss any of the people at any time. But it's just, first, considering a person, you would consider it based on those motions. So that's one way to do it. And then I know that you've done ranking and poll voting in the past as well. So I'll just turn it over to the board to begin the process as you see fit. And we can, staff can support you however you'd like on that.
Judy. So first of all, I just want to say we had, it's just, again, part of my comments earlier about being so fortunate to live in a community that values public education. We had 15 really talented applicants. And we narrowed it down to five. And we heard interviews from five really qualified people tonight. I mean, I think any of them would do a great job. And they bring really amazing experiences and skills to this and good energy and commitment and all those things. So unfortunately, we only have actually one opening now on the budget committee. We had two, we would have had two. One now is appointed because they need to be on the equity committee. We needed a joint person. So that left us, leaves us with one opening, two members that have served. And both of those members reapply. So, and they were excellent members of the budget committee. And so I was really planning tonight to propose that we amend our process and not to go around Robert's rules because we always in the end would be voting, making a motion and voting to appoint someone. But in our selection process, to sort of honor what we heard from everyone. I really wanted to make it more fair, respectful and transparent. Where all voices were able to be heard. That was my intention. However, I decided not to, to make an amendment to the process to add confusion because this is what was in the board packet. This is what my fellow board members showed up with the idea this was going to be our process. So I'd like to nominate Juan Carlos Vaillay Lopez to be appointed to the budget committee. And once I have a second, I want to speak to why I would like to nominate him. Do I have a second? It's a check.
Okay. Moved by Judy Newman to nominate Juan Carlos Vaillay to be appointed to the budget committee and seconded by Alicia Hayes. Is there any discussion?
Can I speak to it first and say nominate? Okay. I'm nominating Juan Carlos because he served a term on the budget committee. And this last year, he stepped up to be vice chair of the committee. And I thought his contributions were excellent. And I think he brings lived experience to our board. He was an immigrant. He started school not speaking English. He's been unhoused. He's, you know, gotten a great education. And he has broad networks in our community and good connections. And I think he's been a really, his questions and issues that he brings to the budget committee, I'd like to see continue.
Alicia.
Well, Judy hit all the high points. I will say I really appreciated Juan Carlos's perspective on the budget committee. We don't always agree. And that is what I'm looking for, somebody that brings something different than me and brings different connections in community than I have. I think his reach is far. He is connected to many different groups and many different people. He brings those perspectives into the room. I also appreciate that he stepped up and provided leadership. And I think he's, it's a necessary voice. It's one I don't want to cut off. And so that's why I would be, I supported this. And I would vote for Juan Carlos for the budget committee. Thanks.
Is there any other discussion? Laurel?
I, I really like him. And I like that his intelligence and what he brought. Well, I only met him last year at the budget committee. I appreciated it a lot. I will say that my preference is for something closer to the student voice, which in the budget committee, I was really excited about the input we had from Dakota as well. I would encourage Juan Carlos to go out for the school board, please. We have four openings coming in May. And I would love to have your intelligence as part of this group up here. I also, I will, my leaning is towards Dakota. But it's not to say that I don't appreciate Juan Carlos's voice and experience and knowledge. I thought, I love the conversations we had, like you said, Alicia. But I also, I, I would really love to see somebody with his acumen to be on this board. Thank you.
Are there any other comments? Okay, well then, with that, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of appointing Juan Carlos Vaillay to the opening on the budget committee, raise your hand and say aye. I have ayes from Judy Newman and Alicia Hayes. All those opposed, raise your hand and say aye. I have, oh, sorry, mays. Yes, thank you. There's mays from Maya Rabasa, Gordon Leifer, Michelle Shu and Kirti Hasucha Kaufman. The motion does not pass. Are there any other motions, Gordon?
Just trying to be cognizant of Kirti's, I'd like to move to appoint Dakota Boulet to the budget committee. And like others, I have a great appreciation for Juan Carlos Vaillay and other candidates and hope they'll continue to find ways to be involved in the school board and the community. But I'm also, I don't want the student experience, the experience of being unhoused and the other things that Dakota talked about, which are really valuable for all people to have. So that's my motion.
The motion is, the motion is to appoint Dakota Boulet to the opening on the school board. Is there a second? Moved by Gordon Leifer, seconded by Laurel O'Rourke. Is there any discussion? I'm, Gordon, start it, but you're done. Laurel.
I appreciated the freshness. And I say freshness because every time Dakota spoke during the budget committee, it was from the heart and from knowledge and what brought a perspective that wasn't anybody else's on that committee. And that's what you need in a committee. You need that diversity and people that have had struggle or want, and then they want to say, hey, I've had this happen to me. And now I want other people to understand how that affects the decisions that you make in this district. And I think that is valuable in the extreme. And while I really liked everybody who was applying, I was sad that Dakota was only on there for one year and that everybody else... only on there for one year and that everybody else has had a lot more time on the, the board as far as I know, the, not the, the, the committee, sorry. And, um, I want, I want to hear more from them. So that is what I wanted to say, why they're, they're so valuable. Thank you.
Michelle?
Um, I wanted to add that having someone so close to his own school experience is really valuable. I remember what he said, that was a long time ago. So hearing his, um, as, as Laurel said, his fresh perspectives and, um, it's rare to have young people who are able and willing to devote their time to these sorts of positions. And we really should, um, we really should invite them to continue the work that he started and maybe he will run for the board again too.
Anyone else? Judy?
So as I said earlier, this was especially hard appointment and I only have wonderful things to say about Dakota. I only would, I would support him on the board, on the budget committee as well. We have to, you would have to make a choice and the one candidate I put forward was voted down, but I would say Dakota would do a, a great job. He brings a different set of skills as someone who is a fairly recent grad and, um, and so it's, I guess I don't, I, I could speak about every one of the candidates in a positive way, I would say. And I appreciate the service he's had for the year, also two years.
Are there any other comments? Okay. The only thing that I personally would add is that, um, I watched Dakota over the last few years, really working diligently to expand his network of people and finding great success in doing so. So I feel really, um, confident that not only does he have access to a part of our community that many of us do not as a younger, more recent grad of folks who do, like Michelle said, remember the high school experience, but he also graduated from North Auge High School, which gives him immediate experience in part of the district that, um, as we're, as we are considering budgetary decisions, um, this is the part of the district that, that really deserves some, some careful attention. And I'm excited personally to support someone who has that firsthand experience with why it is that the North Region, um, is, um, consistently coming up in our conversations and our intentions to, um, pay closer attention, energy and devote resources. So, um, I, I want to say thank you to all five of the candidates, however, but for me, Dakota stands out as a, as an irreplicable contributor. And I see Alicia.
Actually, one thing that Dakota said, you know, our sound wasn't that great, but I think he said he was a member of the L G D Q community as well. I want to call that out and all of that, um, because I think that is a voice that we can all wish more.
And he, he's a very outspoken, I know that he, uh, uh, I don't know what the right term is. He tabled for the D P L C at the Pride event this year, for example. He's really dedicated a lot of time and energy to the best new year.
He said he was chair of the Stonewall.
Stonewall commit, uh, for the, for the, yes, you're right. If there's no other comments, we'll fit this to the question. All those in favor of appointing Dakota Boulet to the opening on the four J budget committee, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I see we have a unanimous support for the motion with aye, aye votes from Maya Rabasa, Gordon Leifer, Michelle Shu, Alicia Hayes, Judy Newman and Kirthy Hasija Kaufman. The motion passes and congratulations Dakota, you are officially appointed to the board. You will be receiving communication shortly. I don't know if Kirthy can hold on a little bit longer. We also have another action item that could use your attention if you have time, but I understand you're also starting your day and working.
Yeah, I'm unfortunately going to have to leave in a few minutes, but, um, if I, if you guys get to a point where you're calling a vote, um, I maybe I'll just call in real quick. I appreciate, I appreciate you moving this around. Um, welcome Dakota. I'm excited about all the new things that are happening.
Thanks Kirthy. We'll reach out if, if we get to a vote. Uh, the next on the agenda is to approve the slate of equity trainers. Is there a motion? I, I said we would come back to that at the end.
Uh, I move that we approve the slate of equity trainers to be considered as submitted by staff.
Okay. Gordon moves to approve the slate of equity trainer for the, yeah, the slate of equity trainers as moved forward by staff. Is there a second? So no second for the equity trainers to move forward? Okay. So.
It dies.
It dies. Alicia?
Thanks, Maya. I didn't move it forward, uh, and the motion has, has died, so I just want to skip that. That's okay. I did move it forward because I looked at a couple of things. One, somebody said we have four positions open and I fear that by the time we get somebody hired and, and this will be a new board. And so I think I will pause this and I would wait for your new board to be seated to do the work and I would hope that we could finish the work we've already started. That's really important to me.
Can I interrupt you and suggest that you make that as a motion? Because then we could make a decision to do that.
To pause it?
Yes.
I will, but my other point is when I looked at the numbers, there was such disparity that always says to me in the work I used to do, um, that there was an issue with understanding, our understanding of each other and what we were looking for, how the RFP was put out, nothing about staff, but it just happens. So if I make a motion, I think it's a good idea, um, that I would remove that, I don't know, we need to table it, it died. I would hope you would bring it back in July with your new board. So that's just my, you decide we need a motion. I just wanted to share why I didn't vote to move forward.
Laurel?
Um, I'd like to make a motion to send it, um, I'm not sure how to say this, but send it, I think, back to staff. I don't feel like, well, when we heard in leadership, which everybody wasn't there, that this was kind of irregular, how this happened, that told, that gave a, a, a heads up to me that it could have been done in a different way. Also, as somebody who's worked for Lang County, I have never seen something done in this way because when we as a district are paying somebody to do this work, there are strict rules about how this happens. And I think we as a board kind of wandered into these rules, not purposefully, but it's not our place. And I think the reason we have such excellent staff is to do this work. This is not the entire motion, by the way. I thought, but to do this work and then bring it to us almost complete because they've done all of that work that's legally has to be done in a very certain way to keep us out of liability. And it is our job as a board to protect that as well. Um, and I think the way this happened was not at all the way I've ever seen this happen in any government entity. So I would ask, I, I, I don't totally agree with Alicia. I mean, I understand there's new people, but I think with the knowledge we have with staff, how to do this, um, we could have somebody ready to go by the time we have that new board. And it doesn't have to be us deciding all this because we have excellent people doing this work. We could come in at the very end when like the final three are chosen by staff. And this is just a suggestion. I would ask staff to bring a proposal of how to do it. Um, and then look at it that time, everybody's been, everything has been checked at a point where it's all legal and done at, at the level that the state demands. So my motion is that this goes back to staff to bring it back to us with a, how is that called? A plan of action of how this will happen. And it's not for us to say, tell them exactly step by step how it, it happens. It's for us to listen how, is it called a procurement process? How, okay.
Yeah, a procurement process with probably what we would call an, an RFP or request or proposals.
Okay.
And, um, and, uh, and Kalina is our, our expert on that. And so she would, she would kind of lead that, lead that effort with us.
Can you, Alicia, can you speak into the mic so we can all hear you just a second?
Well, she, so the motion could be that take for us to send it to staff, create a RFP process to bring it back to us. This is, is that correct? We said? That's what we should say.
So that means starting completely over?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. But this was not Stonewall.
Okay.
And it's not staff's fault. I'll say that eight times that you want me to.
No, I, I think that's a valid point because we voted unanimously to do it at each step of the way. So it really, if, if, if we were to make that, it comes with an apology on our behalf because each step of the way, we said, we'd like to do it this way and made a tricking for you.
I think we also do that to ourselves. So no harm, no foul.
Right. We don't get to decide. Is there a second for essentially starting over? Alicia? Seconding?
I would second and then at some point I would like to make a reflection of that.
Okay. So moved by Laurel to, um, send it back to staff to begin the process anew. Is that okay to word it that way, Laurel?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. And seconded by Alicia Hayes. Alicia?
Thank you. My finally amendment or amendment would be that, that the decision, like if you decide, if you decide that I'll bring three forward, happens in your first meeting, uh, the new board that's seated. I, I don't want to be making this decision in May when I'm going to be off the board. I think we talk a lot about that, um, making sure that the people have a voice, the new people have a voice. That would just be my thinking. Maybe I won't make it as amendment. I'll just give it to you as my thinking.
Gordon?
Well, don't I have to? Since it's my amendment.
No, I just said it's just my thinking.
Oh, it's, you take it.
Gordon?
I guess to me the, the most important thing is to move forward. So I would, I would not, and I'm hoping to be convinced, I feel like, um, it doesn't, to me, it doesn't feel like this is such a thing that's like an, an election or political issue that we need to wait for new people. And I know that we decided to not have staff like make an initial calling based on any kind of criteria. We said that we wanted to do that, the whole board at every step. So it's fine with me to go back the other way and have staff do a new RFP and ask staff to bring to us who they think are the top three or four or whatever. But I do think, I guess one of the things that became clear to me is both that of the, of the proposals that we got, um, I felt like there are a lot of people who, um, both had very different approaches to the work and had very different ideas about what the scope of the work was. Like there were some that was like, okay, we're going to review all of your policies and bylaws and constitutions and kind of like redo the equity project of the district as a whole. And there were others who were more focused on specifically on the operations of the board and district leadership. And I mean, some of this feels like, um, things that we need to decide as a board. What do we want that scope to be? That's not something that staff can decide and I don't want to, and maybe we don't know until we get into it somewhat, which is why I feel like I don't want to keep like delaying, delaying to get it perfect. I feel like to some degree, like these are all people with different talents. We're going to start some, maybe other people know better than I do. I feel like I just don't want to keep delaying. I don't want to start one way or the other. So I'm fine if we do another RFP, but I'd rather, you know, try to say, okay, so we want to try again. Let's get three or four new people and just try to move. Thanks.
I think I saw you Judy and then Michelle.
Uh, I think Gordon, we do need to define the scope. I don't think we can leave it open ended because that also drives the budget and what we want to spend. And I agree with you, there was clearly not a common understanding of the scope of the, um, with applications we got. But I would say the reason, the thing that gives me pause is when I looked at the raw scores, like our three finalists on our board, we rated people one to nine. I think there were nine applications. Each one had a range of someone rating them one and someone rating them eight or nine. And that tells, and, and that is rating and we could average them, but these are going to be people that we're going to work with and we're committing to do some hard work. And so it worries me that some people love or some people really didn't put them as a low priority. So that's why I think having some common values, it's more because we're hiring them to do work with all of us, we have to have some trust or some ability, confidence and some level of agreement. So that's, I, I, I'd like to see a little more coming together around it than just averaging the score for this reason, for this purpose.
Michelle?
Um, I agree with Gordon that we should get moving on this, but I'm, I'm not quite understanding Judy, what you mean by having some trust because most of the people who, who submitted an RFP, I, I don't know who they are. I haven't done any kind of work with them. So I don't know how to establish trust with, um, someone who submits a proposal, um, particularly if they live across the country. Like I was, I was prioritizing some things that, um, didn't seem to be prioritized by my, the board members. Um, and I think that was part of the problem. Um, I do not do this virtually. I just want to say that clearly. And, um, yeah, these are, these are people, these are unknown entities, you know? So I'm, I'm not, I'm not entirely sure what you mean by having trust before you even choose someone, um, because it's not a given. We're going to see as we go along. Um, they're all professionals and I understand that they, they've all had a lot of, every single person who applied, much like everyone who applied for the budget, um, positions. They're all qualified. So, yeah, I, I, I don't know what you mean by that.
I'll just, but trust, uh, uh, confidence maybe is a better term because we did rate them and for some reason, some people felt more confident in the application or proposal or saw something different. You're right. When we, we will, when we work, I think having some confidence or buy into something does help that. So trust might not have been the best choice of words, maybe confidence.
Laurel, and then I'd like to add myself to the queue. I can't go after you, Alicia.
I think it's, um, when I made the motion, um, I was saying staff had the most ability to understand the rules around this because we, who had the first charge of this, this is what made it so murky. We have good staff. I think as a board, there are parts here where we have, are having trouble stepping back and saying, we have good staff, let them do their work. Cause it is perfectly okay for us to say, of course, the parameters, that's what we do. But it's also perfectly okay to say, and make sure we do not wander, wander and not be, not be beholden to our policies and the state laws that govern this and the, the county rules that govern this, all the things that go around procurement. I think it's mostly states that have to be followed. We just, it's really important. We just, it's really important that we trust, and that's where for me where trust comes in, we trust our staff who, to do this work. And we, we just write the parameters and then they do the rest of it. That is my intent behind this. And I think it's important that we show that trust to our staff. Because it is seen when we are trying to micromanage and make hairy little step in a certain way. It is very, I, as somebody who's been, who is a recovering bureaucrat, um, I will tell you, it's, you can't do your job well in that. So we, please be willing to let people just do their job and not dictate it from the bench. Thank you.
I, um, the only thing that I will add is that I support sending this to staff, but not yet. So I can't vote for the motion because I think we as a, as a board still have work to do. I think maybe it was Alicia or Judy pointed out that there were clearly vast differences of expectations of what we wanted in the advisor. And I think that, that we have, we were eager and we, um, we, we jumped too quickly. And so I, I think that it's important that before we throw it back and send you up for another process that, that might be clunky. Because I don't think you all suggested or we suggested anything illegal, but it sure was messy and clunky and not best practices, undeniably. So I think that, um, that's, that's where I stand, I'd like to wait to send it back. So I can't vote for that tonight, I can, um, afterwards I will make a motion that we revisit it ourselves in terms of the time. Alicia?
I, I actually think when I listened to Laurel's motion, I thought that was part of it. Is that staff would create a process, but the first thing they have to do is get us in a room, a work session, to give the parameters, much like how we ran the schedule, right? And I don't want to be not doing my duty as a board member if I try to get somebody else to do this work. I just wanted to be respectful, I'm happy to do it, this is exciting work. I'm happy to be a board member that helps make the, the trainers. So I just want you to know that. But I would say, when you give it to staff, the first thing they're gonna do in a procurement is they're gonna get us in a room, they're gonna make us help. And I, I'm just gonna throw my two cents, and I'm with Michelle, I, I want to see the people in the room. We didn't ask for that, but we can ask for that, so that would, so anyway, I don't know if you want to make a difference or you just want clarification on that? I'm good either way, thanks.
If that was the intention, I didn't necessarily hear that, so.
It, it was just what I thought. I didn't, you didn't, you didn't hear it, I just thought it. Sorry, that's all.
So if it, if it's, um, rearticulated to include that step, I, um, would consider it in a different light. But without that step, I, I don't think we're setting our staff up for success. And it's not because they aren't, you know, endlessly talented, um, it's because they don't know what we want.
I agree with you.
Laurel?
Um, can I ask, Andy, can you talk to this? Because as far as I understand, pure procurement process, this is, that's one of the first steps of the procurement process.
Yeah, I think, um, we still have some retreat time, right? And some of that could be used for identifying, much like we did with the, the schedule, what, what are the values? And make sure that, even though we might be saying the same words, that we are thinking the same definitions. And if, if the board would allow us to push enough, respectfully so, until we get the sense that, that we really know how to vet proposals, then I think we could be really successful in doing that.
Laurel? I'd like to call a question.
What is the question exactly now? What is the proposal?
The motion was to send us back to staff to start over.
With clarification from Gordon.
Is that, was that the motion to start?
That's, that's Alicia's friendly amendment, I'll say, I'm putting that in your mouth, I guess, but.
Oh, how about Alicia say it so that we are doing this publicly?
Let me, and I move that we return this process or ask the staff to, to recreate this, give me a word, please.
I, I, Kalina's gave me a message here, and she, she says the, it's called scope development. And she said that she would be able to provide a working draft for you to get started.
Okay, so then the motion is we ask staff to create a working draft with scope development as part of that to do the RFP for, what did we call it? The, for, um, this, uh, equity trainers, is what you call it here.
And just to be clear, the step in between is they're gonna give us whatever those words he said, and then we're gonna make and finalize the scope, and then that.
That is correct, that's the scope.
Scope development.
She being, oh, I'm sorry. So, that's, that's the motion that Laurel's putting forward with my friendly amendment.
Okay, and the second was by Alicia? Okay, so, I'm gonna try to rearticulate that because I believe I'm supposed to. The motion is to begin this process over with the first step to have staff engage us in scope development. And then to continue with the development of an RFP, and from there, guide us down route. Uh, those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
I see six hands raised, and Pyriti's no longer here, so that passes unanimously with ayes from Maya Rabasa, Gordon Laper, Michelle Shu, Alicia Hayes, Judy Muman, and Laurel O'Rourke. Now we return to, um, approving the 2023 Eugene School Board Legislative Priorities. Would someone like to make a motion, I'm looking at you Judy.
Uh, I move that we adopt the Eugene District 4J School Board 2023 Legislative Priorities as shown in the packet.
So moved by Judy, is there a second? Laurel O'Rourke seconds, uh, is there any discussion? Gordon?
I, there's only one of these that I have potential concern about, which is in the, um, in the first item listed under the heading of student and workforce supports, which I will, sorry, let's try to find it. Sorry, it says something about, um, I don't know if you have.
Oh, we can read it to you? Is that what you're looking for?
Please, thank you.
Okay, um, recruit and retain a diverse and qualified workforce. This can include addressing pay issues.
Yes, so my only concern is I, you know, people can read that different ways. And I won't, I wouldn't and won't support a bill that sets pay in a process that goes around collective bargaining. I don't know that that's what anybody intended. I just wanted to flag that because I don't want to get to a point where there is a bill like that and we say, oh, we already voted to say we support that. So if we can all agree that we're not, we don't mean anything in particular by that, we may have different ideas, but we haven't committed ourselves to a particular position on that, then I'm good with approving office, that was the, that's my motion.
That's a very fair point, let me just, can I just clarify how, um, the legislative committee, these are sort of broad goals and we collected, Pyriti and I collected these from everyone and then put them together and tried, made sense out of them and tried to pull together wording. If, if a bill comes up or there is some initiative around that and it fits into our priorities, we would, we would bring to the board, say we'd like to write a letter, and we just sort of report in so that people would be able to say, well, that bill is really terrible, this is what I've heard about it. Obviously, we want to get our collective input. So if that allows your fears about that, we won't just be out there acting as free agents, okay?
Yes, it does, thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Michelle?
In that case, all those in favor of approving the 2023 Eugene School Board Legislative Priorities as outlined in our board packet, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
I see six hands raised, it passes unanimously with ayes from Maya Rabasa, Gordon Laper, Michelle Shu, Alicia Hayes, Judy Muman, and Laurel O'Rourke. Now, uh, the last item action is a resolution of the complaint, um, discussed during the executive session this evening. May I have a motion?
Yes.
Gordon?
I move, uh, I move that we send a letter to the complainant outlining our resolution as advised by counsel. I know that sounds very complex, I can't say.
Alicia Hayes? Okay, so moved by Gordon to, uh, send a letter to the complainant, um, as advised by legal counsel and seconded by Alicia Hayes, is there any discussion? In that case, all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Again, the motion passes unanimously with ayes votes from Maya Rabasa, Gordon Laper, Michelle Shu, Alicia Hayes, Judy Muman, and Laurel O'Rourke. In that case, we move on to item for action at a future meeting. The first item up is the, is to consider the renewal of the public charter school contract with Network Charter School, Network Charter School. Um, and Cassandra Caymans is presenting this item. I believe she is virtual with us tonight.
She's coming as is now in this room.
Great.
Good evening, everyone, um, board chair Rabasa, superintendent Di, and the rest of the board. Uh, sorry, um, so as you know, my name is Cassandra Caymans and I am the curriculum administrator for extended learning in the school district as well as the charter school liaison. And I'm here tonight to present to you information regarding the request to renew the, renew the charter for Network Charter School. You heard earlier this evening about all of the possibilities available for our students at Network Charter. You spoke about your experiences as well at, uh, with Network Charter. So my role tonight is to give you the information, um, by law, what is required of you as a school board to consider for the renewal. So Network is in their 20th year being a charter school for our district, and they have requested a renewal of their charter for an additional 10 years. Um, and this is in accordance with Oregon revised statute 338.065 and our board policy. So as the school board, um, it is up to you to determine whether or not to approve the request for renewal. Um, according to the policy LBE, LBE-AR and the ORS that I previously referred to, um, the board must base their decision on a good faith evaluation of certain components. These components include compliance with all applicable state and federal laws, compliance with the charter contract of the public charter school, compliance with any renewal criteria specified in the charter of the public charter school. There's a lot of repeat of repetitive words here. And if the charter school is meeting or working toward meeting student performance goals. Also, whether or not it is fiscally stable and uses sound financial management system. We had a charter school review team meet in November to review these required components for evaluation. The team's findings are detailed in the item for action PDF that you have for the meeting, along with additional materials to help the board make this good faith evaluation. First, I'm gonna share with you a little bit more information about Network in addition to what, um, our community members have already shared with you tonight. Network is a charter school that offers a hands-on, community embedded, hands-on with community embedded, uh, community partnership embedded in their classes, rich with unique and rewarding learning opportunities, which we spoke about. They give the students opportunities to learn core content integrated with experiences through different community organizations, such as Heartwise, um, which is a yoga studio, Nearby Nature, Mecca, and Le Petit Gourmet. The demographics of Network is made up of 75% white students, um, which is close to, um, our district, which is at about 67%. They have almost twice the percentage of students on IAPs as the district average, um, at about 30%. Our district average is about 14%. Their enrollment over the past year has been steady, or at 100 students, and this has been pretty steady over the last several years. One thing to note is that, um, about every year, they have about 50% of their students that have changed schools at least once, if not more, which leads to their high mobility rate. Um, in regards to the charter school review team findings, the team determined that the overall recommendation is to approve the renewal, although the recommendation is only for a five-year contract instead of the requested 10-year contract. There are a few areas of concern that were raised by the review team in regards to meeting student performance goals, and these have been areas of concern over several years. Network Charter School continues to be identified as a comprehensive support and improvement school based on ODE's accountability measures, which are tied to students' per, performance. The areas of concern that the review team noted were the four, was the four-year graduation rate. Notably, they have made a lot of progress, um, in their graduation rate, but it is still at a 53%, which is below the stake goal of 67%. They have a regular attenders rate of 11%. This means that only 11% of their students attended class more than 90% of the time last year. And their ninth grade on-track graduation data shows only 41% of their ninth graders had completed enough credits at the end of last year to be on track for graduation. The details of these findings and areas of can be, concern can be found in the report provided in the board packet. Like I said before, it's the recommendation of the charter school review team and that of the superintendent that the school board approved the request for five years instead of the requested 10 years for Network Charter School, as they continue to make progress towards these student performance goals. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. And if I don't have an answer, I'm happy to, uh, find you the answer and provide it to you prior to the board meeting on January 18th, when you will take final action on this item.
Any questions, Laurel? As I mentioned when I talked about them in my opening, um, statement, having a criteria that, as you said, it comes from ODE, that is what is you, that is used, does not show the amazing work that they do.
Right.
Doesn't, it doesn't accurately portray what they're doing. So I bet my kid is one of those kids that will show up at the, in the attendance rate because that boy is never on time to school. And we've tried everything. And I refuse to make his life hell because he can't get up and be somewhere at a certain time. And, and for him to think he's less of a person, even though it frustrates me, yes. But it's, he's still a good person and he loves his family and he does all these things right. And you know what Network says? Yes, you should be at school on time, you should be doing this. They say all the right things that he, that they're supposed to say, but they also say, we're glad you're here. We're glad to see you today. There's no shame. Shame does not get kids who are at what people call, I'm gonna use quotation marks, like tier three, to come back. And they are, and this is a criteria, I would just wish that we could change this somehow and maybe we could have a chat sometime, Cassandra, if you could tell me who I need to whisper in the ear of. But I really want to see the change of this criteria because if most of their kids are this tier three and it, and you're looking at a number of it 11%, you know, for something, it's not seeing the actual positivity in the change. I would love to see what happened at 4J and then what's happening here. And you see the. And you see the disparity, like actually, they show up 11%. That's amazing. Great. They never showed up before, right? Or I forget what you said, the 40% one, but I wanted to see the comparison to that to 4J, was the last data number I think you gave.
Oh, the ninth grade on-track data?
Yeah, I would love to see what our numbers are for that. I know they're probably higher because we have 10 more kids. I mean, when you only have 100 kids, and some of those are middle schoolers, right?
It's the ninth graders that they look at for that. So, it doesn't include the middle schoolers in that percentage. But you are right with the high mobility rate that they have, with the percentage of students that attend more than one school in a course of a year. It does make it very difficult for students to earn enough credit to stay on track.
Yeah, and then they went and got that grant, which, by the way, I don't know if anybody heard, but there was a GoFundMe because I guess the grant is less than it was supposed to be because they have this program where kids can go. And they learn a lot. My son did the one to Lewis and Clark. And they learned the real history of Lewis and Clark, not what I learned in 4J in the 70s, I know, and 80s, whatever. I know. Wow, who said that? But the reality is that they're learning really good information, accurate information, and it's and they're getting credit for it. And it's not like they're just doing it to make sure their numbers go up, which is what I see in other places. Because you could absolutely pad the system. Their focus is on those kids. So, I would love to see a 10-year renewal for them. That's all of this talking is to say 10 or more, the only thing I worry about, and maybe you can answer this, Cassandra, does that, would they, does that mean, you know, sometimes when you sign up for 10 years, you don't get access to the money at five years? Does that mean they're restricted to a certain level of funding? Or will they proceed and go up as they need it to?
Their funding is based on their average daily weighted membership.
Okay, that's what I'd love to see. Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate all the information.
Judy? Thank you. I know it's really helpful to have this, your personal experience with Network Charter, for sure. I just have one question about the report, and I realize so the bullet, the last bullet about the school improvement plan, is that designed to address some of the things that you mentioned here? And it sounds like they have an extension to January.
Yes.
I guess I'd like to support, and they'll probably have some givens. I think attendance would be something good to look at, but to Laurel's point, given a good percentage of the kids in Network Charter are children on IAPs or, you know, kids that were not doing well in the regular school, to show improvement, I think would be very powerful because this is, or some other measure they think is relevant in addition. I don't know if these can continue, but it sounds like it's just transformational for certain kids and that the progress they make or the changes are very different. So, it would be really great to be able to reflect that in their school improvement plan or some of that data. That's my only thought.
Yes, so all of our charter schools were expected to submit their school improvement plan by October 31st for review. And we have two of our charter schools at this point in time, Network, one of them that has not submitted those for review. And so, I did make the request to Network that they, and given that they have a new principal this year and that turnover has happened, I know that Penny is working to try to figure out what would be the best option for them as far as a school improvement plan and to review the data that they have. So, I know that they're working on it, and so that was why it was put in there, that we'd like to be able to see that, to know what their goals, what their measurable goals will be for the rest of the year.
Alicia?
Thanks, and thanks for letting me tag along with the team on the business. And, you know, in my time on the board, it's been amazing to see how much Network Charter has grown and what it's doing, and the creativity, particularly the one program.
Yeah.
Now, that is, you know, because it was a creative solution to deal with kids in credit recovery. And I need to see their move that, so we'll be checking out that GoFundMe page. So, I'm excited to move forward with this and to continue to grow and meet the numbers. I think they have some creative solutions that really help the students get that graduation mark. I have a quick question though, because I can't remember. Have we said yes to anybody else who does for 10 years in any other charter school?
We currently have Village School, Ridge Line, and Coburg are all under a 10-year charter right now.
That's very helpful. Thank you.
Michelle?
I'm wondering if some of these numbers that don't meet certain criteria are as a result of pandemic, and if that's been taken into consideration? Because I think it's district-wide that numbers have changed. So, I'm certain that that would be reflected in a charter school as well.
They did have significant graduation rate increases over the last three years. The 53% is just that they still have not met the state level at 67%, which is part of the reason why they are still considered a comprehensive support and improvement school. So, it's tied to the state goal of 67% graduation rate.
Was there a previous renewal, a five-year one as well?
Yes, it was, because they were, at that time, they were on a plan of assistance, and they were still, when the last renewal happened, they were also a comprehensive support and improvement school.
So, each time it's been five years?
Mm-hmm, yes.
So, they're 20 years.
Yeah, they started, I don't believe every year was five years. They started out with a three. I think there was a four-year contract in there somewhere. But most of, they've never had anything more than a five-year, which is the minimum after your second renewal.
Thank you.
I'd like to add myself to the queue. I have a couple of questions, Cassandra, and maybe hopes for more information about a few things. I know that Network Charter School had the, I'll go ahead and use the word privilege to have it as a plan put in place. However, the pandemic happened. So, I do know that there was a tremendous amount of work and guidance and mentorship that was put into action. So, I'm eager to see the school improvement plan in the middle of January or whenever it comes in, especially since we do have a new principal there. And I want to point out that the attendance, I think Michelle's point about the pandemic really is important because if you look at the numbers, the attendance, you know, all over the place has been hit hard, not just with students, but with staff as well post-pandemic, if you can even say that. So, I would love to, maybe if possible, get some statistics on less than the 90% threshold, which I understand is ideal, but maybe we could find out something about how many people are attending regularly, but not at that 90% threshold.
Okay.
I would love it if we could. And I know that Denise has access to these numbers. If they're not official, official, I'm still eager to hear them. But to think about some of the ways of measuring the things that Laurel was describing that aren't here outlined. So, things like, how many, you know, we hear this from 4J in general, so I would love to hear it from Network, but how many meals were delivered during the pandemic, for example? All those different ways of caring. How many students have shopped at that holiday boutique that Denise mentioned? Just, I can't come up with all of them for you, but just maybe listening back to the testimonies and even consulting the school for what are other modes of measurement? If we can even put numbers on them, or at least try to put numbers on them? I would love to hear that, and maybe included in that could be some level of a survey of the students and the staff. I remember with the ESA plan, there was a survey of the staff. And one of the things that was really impressed upon me was that the number of staff that love teaching where they teach. I remember Randy Bernstein was like, "This is out of control in a good way." It was just huge. And I just would love to hear maybe the reasons why that's the case. Why do people like Denise who could teach somewhere where they where they might earn more money, for example, why do they stay there? And why do students find themselves feeling cared for and loved? I know that Laney SD has a survey that they put together that's called Beloved School Community. So, maybe that would be just one that could be used so that nobody has to invent a survey. But I would love to try to find some measurement of these other things that showcase what it is that Network is doing that makes Network such a special place to work and to learn. The one nitty-gritty number I would love, in addition to the four-year graduation rate, is also Network puts a lot of attention and time and energy and resources into their GED program. So, I'd like to find out how many kids are earning their GED through Network Charter School as well. And included in that are the students who, gosh, I know we have a technical term for them. I'm looking at you, Superintendent Dye, the students who had formally technically dropped out and returned in order to either graduate later or else earn a GED. I'd love to find out about those students.
Are you thinking about the five-year completer rate?
Sure, the five-year completer rate, but more than the five-year completer rate, there's a term, it's the students that are
We engage students through the reconnection center. Yeah, I don't know that there's necessarily a group of students that come back to reengage after a period of disengagement.
Okay, so not even just five-year graduation rate. I'm talking about the kids who might be gone for a few years and come back and earn their GEDs. When you have only 100 students at a school, even a handful is a really significant number. So, I'd love to hear about those different things, a different way of measuring for us to consider, because Network is a different way of being. Thank you. I think you are off the hook, Cassandra.
Okay.
Anyone else have other questions? All right, well, we look forward to the next step, I believe, is a hearing. Is that right?
There'll be a public hearing on January 18th, and then you'll also have that as an item for action on the 18th.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you so much. You really appreciate it. You shared with us. Oh, Judy has one more question.
One more question, because in the materials, the recommendation was for a five-year renewal from the superintendent. So, I guess I'd like to hear, and it doesn't have to be now, but as part of it, you know, why you would recommend five versus 10, or why that was the recommendation.
I think that that could certainly be reconsidered. We would love to see the school improvement plan and have some conversations with them about, as others had said, what are some metrics, what are some criteria that the school believes are more important than what the state might measure for every other type of school, because this is not every other type of school.
Okay, now I think we might be done. Thank you, Cassandra. That was all very helpful. I appreciate your enthusiasm in presenting this information as well. So, our next regular board meeting will be on January 18th, 2023. Oh, gosh, I got very eager. Thank you. Yes, the last item for action at a future meeting is to approve the process for the superintendent's evaluation. You found that in the pack. You should have found that in the packet. So, it's a lengthy document. Has anybody had any feedback on that? Is there any suggestions for changes to it? Judy?
I just have a question. What isn't in here are, usually we add also the superintendent's goals that he set for himself. And that would just be an additional page. I'd like to add that because we should be looking at that as well. So, when we do approve it, because the superintendent, you brought the math set goals.
Right.
So, those should be added to the evaluation process.
All right. I, you know, two people did this separately, and this was done, and mine looks different. So, I think that merging the two will achieve that. So, we can collaborate and make sure that these get put together. Thank you. Are there any other questions or suggestions? The only thing that I will comment on is that I want to say thank you to Judy Newman because this is largely built off of the work she did last year to prepare us to do an evaluation. And unfortunately, we never had the chance to use it, so I'm eager to have your work hang off, Judy. And I really appreciate the component where we are asked to really think deeply instead of quickly over both the strengths and accomplishments, but also the areas for improvement or focus. I think that's a really valuable component to this approach and this tool. All right, in that case, again, our next regular board meeting will be on January 18th, 2023. But before we close, are there suggestions by the board for consideration for agenda items to be added at future meetings? Michelle?
I would like to add, like
Can you turn on your mic, Michelle?
Oh. I would like to suggest the addition to consider inclusion of a book consideration policy by the board.
Are there
Book charge consideration?
Reconsideration.
Are there any questions? You want to come up with that? Go ahead, Gordon.
I think this is really important right now with parent, member, or community, random individual comes in and says there's some material in the library that they think doesn't belong there. We don't have a policy, which means each librarian or teacher or principal is having to make a decision on the spot or be deciding how to respond to whatever pressure they may be under. And so, this would be creating some kind of standard objective process that those kinds of objections will go through. So, I think it's important to do that.
Are you guys raising your hand for support or for questions?
I have support.
Laurel?
I have a question. My question has to do with, is there enough time by January 18th to get to legal and to look at all of this, all of the different programs?
Work has been underway. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Michelle.
It's going to be ready, I understand.
Okay, so this is already something that's been in the works without or
So, I saw votes of support or hand raises of support from Judy Newman and Gordon. So, board leadership will review this agenda topic and discuss when or if it will be scheduled. Just a reminder for everyone, as with previous board leadership meetings, meeting notes will be shared in the Friday memo so that board members are all aware of the discussion that takes place in that setting. Are there any other items to add? Alicia?
So, I mentioned it earlier on the report, but I kind of looks along with libraries. I'm hoping that we have on the schedule, or I would ask that we have a review of the new librarians and how that process is going, and if there are any suggestions for moving that forward. I know that's a budgetary, but I know it's a funding thing. So, but still, if there's a vision, you may not be able to find it, but I'm curious about a vision. And in addition, if there's any tweaks, like we just made decisions about where to put those librarians, do we still think those are the best places and so forth? We could just have that reported. Sometimes we should Do we still think those are the best places and so forth? We could just have have that reported sometime at the end of the year. I'd be great if we did it before the pledge process.
Okay. Are there any questions for Alicia? So I have a question, Alicia, a continuation of what Amy Gage started. A few meetings ago, but digging in and just continued reporting.
Yeah, I just think the budget coming up and all that.
Absolutely.
Revisit.
So Gordon raises his hand in support. Is there anybody else raising their hand in support of that? Laurel? Right, Michelle? Are there any other items to consider adding to future board meetings? Laurel?
Well, I guess it's a review of policy because. There's no straw calls allowed in Robert's rules, so I I I don't know where this would go. It could be working agreements, I guess, but to understand. That we would be voting to when we add things to. Board meeting.
So.
Because that has been something that has regularly been a misunderstanding, so I would have there to be. Either it's a policy added. To our board policy that we will be working outside of Robert's rules for this. Or we will work with the Robert's rules that we have.
So. Right now, it is in our working agreements, the way that we have been doing it. And the working agreements consist of.
Are you answering to this?
I am.
Okay, but.
If you give me a second, you'll get.
But I I don't I don't, I'm not trying to add something to the agenda.
Right.
So. That enough for us all to to talk about it, not to have a discussion right now.
Right, and I'm giving you the timeline of when that will happen. So it is part of our working agreements, which are made up of both policy and agreements. And in January, we're discussing those so that we can determine. How we want to handle our working agreements and if something needs to become policy or if some of the policies need to be revised.
Okay. So this will be added, this is part of working in January eighteenth?
If it's at the meeting, then it would be January eighteenth, and if not, it would be a work session. No, but we can discuss things at a work session and then make motions in the meeting. Are there any other items to be added to a future agenda?
I just have an announcement, a date at the end, so when we're done, I'd like to do it before we close.
Okay. Are there any other items to be added to the agenda of a future meeting? Okay, Judy, share your date, please.
Well, I just wanted to clarify that the board will be gathering before January eighteenth on January sixth at eight AM for our legislative breakfast. I just want that. Before people go on break in their brains, because that's the first week we're back. And I would ask, I will be emailing after tonight our priorities and making sure the student reps are invited, so. But please reach out personally to your student rep that you're inviting for to tell them they're more than welcome. Yes.
How is my calendar? It's the ninth. Is that incorrect?
It's the sixth, I believe. So yeah, it might have been we originally did the ninth, but we adjusted it and I did send out the invitation with the sixth because of the legislative, so you good?
Thank you.
Okay, great. So I just want that in everyone's calendar and brain. Thank you.
Okay, in that case, thank you, everyone. The meeting is adjourned at nine fifty-eight PM.